Lake Inex.
She landed.
She landed.
Hey, you could, uh. Hey, you can step here if you want.
Sir, we just need to get all the rest of the comments.
Yeah. Yeah. This is. You can start. Uh, Linda's getting in trouble.
Oh, Linda's right here.
You're good. I know.
Good catch.
Hello, Linda. Kind of noise in the room.
I see that.
Did you hear that? Um. Gotcha. Eric here. Kathy Phelan, Dan and Kelly Martin were the ones who heard. And you got.
I'm probably gonna move you. And listen. And I'm trying to try not to comment hardly at all.
Okay.
Because, only because I'm at a restaurant eating dinner.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. No, no worries.
But if I hear it, then, then you don't have to, you know, then I don't have to. You don't have to tell me.
That sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think you can use take your time.
Yeah, we need to sit by you.
When we take over the.
That, uh.
What are the big kids say?
All the Terry.
We're gonna start here.
Terry, do you have that, uh, process?
Yeah.
Uh, little friend?
Terry.
Oh, it's okay.
Yeah, Linda.
I only have three for staff left.
Oh.
I've been hanging up.
Okay. Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Sorry, honey.
No, that's good. Thanks. Thank you too. Bye.
All right, folks, as it is now past six o'clock, it's six oh two, six oh one and a half. Let's begin the meeting. So we'll do a roll call. Uh, Linda is absent. Ferguson.
Here.
Coates here. Harris is absent. Service here. Good. I'd like to thank everybody else for coming. I'd like to also point out that our town marshal is in attendance. So thanks again for taking the position and, and coming here tonight, Eric.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, let's, uh, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Hi. Right, thank you. Okay, call for changes. Reveal the current agenda items. Aaron.
Uh, Tuesday, June eighth.
Oh, July.
A little bit of time travel going on.
Alright.
Also, yeah, and I led the pledge instead of Linda.
Yep.
All right, do you, does anybody have any changes they'd like to make to the agenda?
In town, I was gonna introduce Maria Neeland there.
Okay, yeah, let's go ahead and put that on there. So for, um, engineer D, the new, uh, the Venish floodplain administrator. So could, uh, anyone like to make a motion to that?
I made a motion. We accepted and it has with the addition on it and approval.
Okay, Donna makes the motion.
Second thought.
Aaron, seconds. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, very good. Okay, um, consent calendar approval of the June twenty-fourth and July first meeting minutes. Anybody have any, um, changes they'd love to make to either of those?
I approve most carries. They are.
Okay, Donna makes the motion to approve both. We both did.
Yes.
Donna makes a motion. Aaron, would you like to second?
I will second that motion.
Aaron, seconds. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Conflict of interest, um, if we get to a topic in which, uh, any board member has a conflict of interest, please declare that and take the appropriate action. Thank you. Eric?
I'll just do it now. Um, public hearing for a new application for, uh, uh, off sale liquor license pops grocery shop.
Okay.
I'll be abstaining from motions on that.
Okay, well, then we're gonna, for that one in particular, we will lose a quorum then. Cause we only have two.
Nick of both counties.
No, she's not on the phone. She.
And Shannon's not here.
Shannon is not here, no. So, I mean, we can, uh, try calling Linda and see if she can.
She can.
She can, uh, vote on that one.
Sure.
So, um, if you'd like to answer.
We can address it when it gets there. I mean, I'm not.
Yeah, it's, I just wanted to bring that up.
No, that's a really good point.
Yeah, I appreciate you making, uh, or letting us know about that. Okay, I don't see Joan here, but, uh, the town and FEMA updates, approve board president to sign a letter of commitment for Custer County. So this is, this would be, um, committing the town to the Custer County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. So everybody's aware and that it's stated in the record. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion that the board president is able to sign a letter.
Good. Donna makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All righty. It's like we're gonna have a repeat performance here. Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Do you have any discussion on the matter? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Very good. On to, uh, engineer. So. So we have an oath of office for Anthony and it doesn't look like Neil's here.
It'll be, he's on his way.
He is.
So. He had to, he would pick Maria up from the airport.
Oh, Ken's gotta be here for that. Okay, well.
Ken's got his cannon on the way.
Yeah.
Yeah, he should be on his way, so.
Okay, we could do the rip rap.
Yeah, let's do the rip rap and then, uh, jump back in zoning and come back to engineer once everybody's here.
Yeah.
So. Basically, we're at the tail end of the lagoon. Uh, this is, uh, we're in the point now where we're making sure we got all of necessary materials. Um, I wanted it to be just one last change order that, um, addressed any of the materials that could have been missing during construction. We talked already about, um, two of these items. I'm sorry, I stole your paper. Is this yours? Aaron? So, uh, two of the items, if you've got your paper, um, sixty, uh, I stole it from you.
Oh, did you?
Not for me.
All right, go on down the line.
Sorry about that. So, uh, so item seventeen and item eighteen and item twenty-two are all from the HAGD site. Um, that was what was discussed. Uh, for cotton fill material to complete the lagoon derms. Uh, so when you add those three up, it's like forty-one thousand something. Um, so that was the remaining dirt that was the big looming issue. Uh, so that's in this last change order. And then, um, we also have, um, to deal with, uh, with the tie-in and irrigation with the new devour farms. Um, that's two eight-inch gate valves. That we were, we're still able to tie into that, but we're able to isolate our system and protect it. Um, so it kind of addressed, uh, some outstanding issues with the landowner that gave us all the easement rights to build the lagoons. He basically, they came down to these two valves to make him happy, Marv. So we put those in there as a change order. Actually, um, in that, there was a tie-in with a Y and all that. Uh, Rob did all that for free. Um, he said, since he, since he already had it open, it was, it was a break time. Um, that wasn't an additional cost, so just the two valves is always asking for. Then the last bit is, uh, rip rap for bank erosion control. Um, we had assumed that we would have some rip rap sufficient, you know, didn't see too rip rap sufficient to do the west side. Some of the north side and some of the south side of Lagoon B, but none of that roof wrap was recoverable. And it was about four hundred cubic yards of rip rap. So the four hundred cubic yards, um, it's at forty bucks. Um, that finishes off the, the project. Um, so that was thirty-six thousand. So the total is eighty-two, six fifty-one. Um, this isn't for voting, um, but, you know, we can here for approval and, um, but there's still need to be proper change order forms submitted that gets approved by the state. And I, as you've seen in the past, we've approved change orders before where it's a formal document and everything. And it's a tore it all apart and downsized it. So before we get into that, you know, if you guys are good with me preparing this formal document submitting to the state for their review and blessing, that's what I'm asking for.
Uh, Aaron?
I'll make a motion to authorize Anthony to draft the document for, uh, submission for approval by the state.
Yeah, including the rip rap.
Including the rip rap.
Okay. Aaron makes the motion. Yeah, that's right. I'll just go ahead and second. No, that's fine. We can do that in third class municipality. The, the chair and the president is an active member of the board. Okay, um, motion has been made and seconded. Do I have any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's what carries. Good, pretty good. Um, so that takes care of the approval. Um, so wait, let's go ahead and do the oath of office for Anthony, and I believe you need to administer that, Dan.
Sure.
Now for your, for your sword.
Okay. You'll sign that.
Something I read. Yeah. Please raise your right hand. Would you please recite the oath?
Okay. I, Anthony Theodore, having been appointed to the office of town engineer with, within and for the town of Hermosa is said, in said county and state, do solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States, the constitution of the state of South Dakota, and the ordinances of said town of Hermosa, that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my knowledge and ability, perform all duties of my said office of town engineer. So, I do go. Thank you.
All right.
Neil, Neil will be here in three minutes. I don't know if we can come back to this. Neil and Maria.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's, uh, let's go down to planning and zoning. I think we're just gonna have to end up jumping around a little bit tonight on the agenda due to, uh, attendance issues, but that's not, that's not a problem. So planning and zoning, uh, a permit twenty twenty-five dash fourteen digging permit. That's one for three sixty violence that was tabled until tonight. And, um, I believe the office ladies tried to get ahold of the contractor. And he said that he mailed the paperwork in. We have not yet received it. I happened to call the contractor today too. And he told me the same thing and I said, well, do you have it on a computer or is it digital? He said yes, and so I, uh, just texted him the email for his request that he could send it to, and so we're still waiting for that email right now, so. I think at this time we should table this permit until the next meeting and hopefully we'll have all the necessary paperwork for that. So if you all agree with that, so I'll just go ahead and make the motion to table until the next meeting.
Yeah.
Second thought.
And second. Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the motion carries. Looks like we have Neil and I'm guessing it's Maria here.
I have Maria.
Great. All right, well, let's jump back up to engineer. And Neil, if you'd like to take the oath of office.
Oh, sure.
Town planner?
Can't go have the original sign.
Okay. Please raise your right hand and cite the oath, you know, student. I, Neil, if I don't have it been appointed to the office of town planner within and for the town of Hermosa and said county and state, I solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States, constitution of the state of South Dakota, in the ordinance of this town of Hermosa, that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, perform all duties of my said office of town planner. Congratulations. Thank you.
Yeah, that's.
Sign the original one.
Oh, okay. I didn't sign it.
Yep, so if y'all didn't know, this is Neil and he is the go-to guy for our permits now. He is our con town planner through Venish, and so when people bring a permit into the office, it will go to Neil and and he will, uh, assist us in getting all the construction, everything done along with Anthony. So that's, uh, that's where we're at with that right now.
I gotta sign.
Yep, and then once Anthony has his signature done on there, we can go on to, uh, meeting Maria, I guess officially.
So just wanted to introduce Maria. She's, she's flown in from Kansas. Um, so Maria's worked a lot with us. She started out helping the town of Hermosa with our lagoons. So what people didn't know is that when we took on the project, the first thing we had to do was clear our finish clearing all the environmental clearances, including floodplain. Maria is our, one of our best floodplain managers in the country. And she really was knew exactly what to do and what steps to take with the state of South Dakota to basically clear that so that we can move forward in the design. So, so she was help, helping the town even before you met her. And, uh, so she's gonna be helping us with all our FEMA related, um, floodplain mitigation stuff. And, uh, so she's here to get to know Hermosa, get to know some of our flood-related issues. Um, and then, and I did a bunch of recon for her today, give, give her pictures and stuff, and, and she'll be here tomorrow. Um, and we're going up to Custer, so.
Okay.
To help them.
Yeah, well, welcome, Maria. Thanks for all your hard work and, uh, helping us get our lagoon project off the ground. And as you well know, it's almost finished, and so I'm glad to hear that you were an instrumental part in doing that, so. Thanks again. And, uh, does anyone have any questions for her, or do you have anything you'd like to say, Maria?
Um, now to say that I've been working on the FEMA flowplain world for about ten years now. I have a lot of experience from the regulatory side, working with state cooperating technical partners for FEMA, but I'm also working with local municipalities on um, their floodplain management needs. So I've plopped in on call capacities and other things of that sort, so. I'm excited to get to know Hermosa better and that area up here.
Nice. All right, well, thank you. See, anyone have any questions for? All right, well, um, very good. Well, let's move on then. And, uh, let's see, planning and zoning B, uh, permit twenty twenty-five dash fifteen. It's, uh, four forty Main Street.
That, that was approved, so we just have a staff report.
Yep.
Familiar with this?
Yeah. Thanks.
Okay. Yep, so it was approved, um, with the stipulation that we received the documentation for the report. Looks here like we have both the, uh, narrative and the site plan there, and I, it sounds like Neil's gonna.
No, you, you, you're good there. Yeah, there's, as you can see, there's some background information. This is actually, this is just a grading permit, next day permit that I speak for.
I believe this was the dirt needed for the lagoon.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. So says, um, staff report on there.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so we have the digging permit, which was approved. With the, um, stipulation as we mentioned. Okay, so, um, what are, what did you want to present?
Just basically just to answer the question, yeah, it's basically the lagoon project.
Yeah, oh, okay. Great. Well, um, would you like to just briefly go over the staff report for that?
Well, could do that. Basically, it's involved. Hey, John.
Don't see it. Um, this.
That's the next one. That's the carport.
But I thought I wrote something regarding, um, we had a right-of-way question, if we needed a right-of-way permit from, from DOT.
Oh.
Uh, what it turned out to be is that the, um, right-of-way boundary, the, the road surface hugs the northern right-of-way uh, part of the right-of-way. So actually, it doesn't extend into that property as far as we thought. And it's actually stops at the edge of the sidewalk. So they're a good, I think it was four to five feet away from the right-of-way where they're excavating. And so between the narrative of, uh, why they needed to reduce the height for their crap, the HAGD project they're doing, and then, um, um, the, as long as they, they did the proper erosion control, so we didn't have rocks or debris or erosion into the highway, um, it wasn't necessary to, to request a right-of-way permit. We just provide them the digging permit.
Okay. Yeah, that's good. I mean, this, this one was already approved with, um, the understanding we'd received the documentation, and we did, so I think we can move on to the next one.
Sure.
Which is, uh, permit twenty twenty-five dash sixteen. Carport on fifty-one North Fifth Street.
Yeah, that's it.
You can direct your attention to page twenty-nine. There's a staff report. This one I may have to just kind of get some of your direction on where, how you wish to see on this one. Uh, who we, is Mr. Nolan here?
No.
I thought he was gonna be here.
I thought he was gonna be here, but.
Okay, well, I didn't want to steal thunder here, but anyway, but my understanding is what he wants to do is put a carport in his front yard. And from what I understand, it's one of those smaller carports, he basically, you know, from Amazon type structure that he's gonna put on more of a temporary thing. Not gonna put footings in and things like, though, my understanding is just gonna.
It's like twelve by twenty.
Right.
Yeah.
It's a little, yes, two hundred and forty square feet. If it was two hundred square feet, um, your code basically says it's no, no permit could be required, you know, but he's a little bit over that. Now, the key question then comes up with that, then, um, so it would trigger a building permit. However, if you feel strongly enough that use of to kind of explain the structure, um, if, if you think the structure is so temporary in nature, then it might not be, but you would consider it enough to help for a building. And it was gonna be in the front. So if it is gonna be in the front, I put an excerpt of this, of your code on, on the bottom of page twenty, where it talks about the, uh, it's on the bottom there, A, for single family dwelling, minimum depth shall be twenty feet, and accessory building shall not extend into the front yard, while he was gonna put it in the front. Wouldn't do, I, there's nowhere else you could put it, I mean, unless you put it in the back, but you wouldn't have any access to the back. So the key question that I have for you is, if that's what he, I was hoping to have him give you a description of it. What he described to me was not, not something that's dug in the ground, put in the footings, and it's just a temporary thing to kind of just eat the hail off of. So which would, whether you would even determine that to be a structure. If you tell strongly that it's not even structured, then we have that there. If he does, if you do think it's a strong, strong enough to be considered a structure, then he would have to be after request variance, put it in the front yard. So I'm kind of leaning at that. Um, when I talked to him, that was, he was gonna bring in this demonstration, what he'd ordered. So.
What is the, who's owns the property there?
And he just purchased that.
Right.
Oh, okay.
They don't have any.
Okay, so that's both those parcels are his.
So you're right.
So he just bought the other one.
Can you click on it, Aaron? And he owns that. Well, I wouldn't say it, would it?
I don't think he, uh, we have ownership in here yet.
Okay. We'll get there.
The parcel in question is the highlighted one there, and he'd be wanting to put a carport.
In the front yard and somewhere.
I mean, I guess that'd be to the right edge as we're looking at it.
Yeah. That was my understanding.
Do you have a site plan?
Yeah, I don't.
Yes, right here. Well.
Yeah, that's.
No, I don't think he's.
Yeah, all I see is. Now they're from, uh, meat and, I mean, I don't, I don't think we have enough.
Right.
Information to proceed on this one yet. Um, Aaron?
Yeah, I was just gonna make a motion to table the pending receipt of the site plan.
And then maybe, uh, an example of the building as well. I mean, you know, temporary is one thing, but if it's so temporary, it gets blown away, then, you know, that's not something that we should, we should be, uh.
With location of the structure and height.
Yeah.
Yeah, the description of it. What, what he looked for.
Yeah.
So then you can make a determination, again, just to make a determination if it's even worth permitting.
Okay. Um, so Aaron makes the motion.
The second thought.
Seconds. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Thank you very much, Neil. All right, on flames. So we all paid up on the roads now after these.
Yeah, I also talked to Terry about, you know, we, we really should be only getting one per month. Uh, pay recut, pay app, because we need time for the, the state to reimburse us, so. I let Rob know that and that we need to, we need a little respite so that we can get caught up with the state, which I think they're doing good, right, Terry?
Yeah.
Be able to cover both of these this month.
Yeah, and also that those and get, get the reimbursement, so.
I guess I'll just go ahead and make a motion to approve these claims.
I'll second that.
Aaron, seconds. Are there any discussion of the claims? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right.
Before, before we move on, something, somebody was, something was brought up and needed to, I don't know if we wanna just discuss it under new business, but concerns about the mosquito spray, the status update. I don't know if anybody has information on that right now.
I think he has called Dr. Chuck.
Has he?
Yeah. 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 Cause I think he got a key to the whole. Cause he was gonna spray.
All right, cause people have been asking and.
Yeah, did you vote yes on the claims?
Yeah.
Okay. So do we have the mosquito? It's out of spray?
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to find out something about that. Good. Moving right along, law enforcement abatements and complaints. So do we have a top of the log?
No. We know, yeah, the this one.
Would the members of the law enforcement committee like to go over that?
We've seen the sheriff drag down through.
Nice.
We had, we went over and talked to the sergeant yesterday. Mr. Alias. Might be the doctor. It was a very good, very informative. Thanks, Mr. Alias.
Oh, was it?
I just, you know, I just said that.
Oh, yeah, no, so meeting went well. We were talking with the sergeant, getting everything adjusted. Then me and the sheriff himself started talking and it seemed like the French was gonna go pretty good, working together. We actually just did a, we just started a warrant today too. So MLT's, they called me ahead of time, which was really nice, so it works out. Um. It seems like all of our training is gonna be pretty together too. All of our report stuff's gonna be readable from each other instead of a different system, running with this system and it's just being non-communication. So if something happens up there and it makes its way down here, I can handle it here and up it.
Um, I know you have, you have all kinds of time here, but can you think about, we're calling. I had no. It's fine.
Yeah, cause right now he's one waitlist to get into the class and I did confirm that, but apparently he has not. Why need to contact them?
So that may be an acceptable backup for the other one. Very good. Anything else you guys want to know about? Um.
Oh, we caught a bull snake today.
Is that your first arrest in town then?
So yeah, no, so he was gonna kill it, so I took it upon a rattlesnake, it was a bull snake, so I went and took it and I leased it over here so I waited, it'd get the mice ass.
So you weren't a surgeon rescue.
Yeah. You've been rattlesnakes, if you guys have rattlesnake issues, just call me out and snatch them up and I'll take them down to the reptile garden. So we'll probably kill them off. Makes it a little easier on you guys. Yeah, very good. Make sure we have your card back there for people to get ahold of you. That'd be awesome. And then any other calls for like service, incidents, emergency, just shoot a call on me.
Does that mean human rattlesnake?
That's what you want.
Well, you'll pay for that.
But yeah, um, I just, as of recently, I think yesterday I made myself a little more known, uh, made multiple stops, people going fifty-five through here when it's a thirty-five, that's ridiculous. Gave all verbal warnings due to them being high school kids and I didn't really wanna ruin somebody's whole thing or small ticket. It would most likely be a couple hundred bucks. I'd rather get found and stuff like that, so I'd rather catch the guys that are running too. Those would be the better ones to say, call them off over here. So if you guys, you guys have any other questions, pop them like that. So you see anything here, you call. Big old spiel, yeah? Yeah, that's great. Yeah, I appreciate it, Eric. Thank you.
And so he did get an email from Custer County. Go ahead and check with Golden West to see about it. And we've apparently, we are at our limit of emails right now, so we're gonna do it cost us fifteen bucks a month, so he's okay to do that financially. He's saving us some money for now. So. Eight alias at country ninety, the C dot com, so I'll send that out to you. No. Do you wanna pay the fifteen bucks?
I think it'd be worth it.
I think the law enforcement budget can handle fifteen bucks a month, right?
Do any half and I'll do any half. Okay. Yeah, I think we should do that.
So I will. Okay, I'll get that sent out.
Appreciate their assistance.
Yeah, I mean, and he can have all, he'll have, but.
All the, the, all the people at Custer, the sheriff and all those people are very, very welcoming, very looking forward to working with Eric, so it's, it's gonna be a good relationship.
Yeah, okay, and so very good. So moving on to item C. So we made a motion six months ago to limit the enforcement of abatements until we have the abatement ordinance all the way figured out and I'm still working on finalizing the language and then after that, we need to go through the process of if it's acceptable and it's in that form, then we need to go through the process of making it an ordinance, which is we, we have to go through a couple of readings before we adopt that, I believe, type case. So we have a little bit more time before we can do that, so we need to decide I guess how much longer we'd like to extend that or what we'd like to do, Aaron.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to extend the, or limiting town enforcement of abatements for an additional six months.
Additional six months.
Yes. But nuisance one is.
With the exception, with the same exception for emergency, health, safety and, yeah, health, safety while there, whatever the previous motion made, happy pace.
Okay. Very good. Aaron makes the motion.
A second.
On a seconds. Okay, do we have any discussion on that? Aaron.
One thing I've been thinking about and I, I feel like maybe a few of us have had this thought in our mind is looking into the possibility of contracting out code enforcement to a neutral third party. I think it could be a good long-term option. And while we're in the process of writing this ordinance, that sort of thing may in fact, may impact it. So I think now, while we're in this additional six month hiatus, I think that's something we should do a little research on to see if it's something we can afford, if it's something we'd like to do so that we don't finalize an ordinance and then do it and be like, oh, now we gotta turn around and change the ordinance again so that it applies to contract.
Okay, Anthony.
So Aaron called me and asked if I knew any such services and everything and I said, I deferred to Neil because Neil can maybe share his experience in Mitchell and how they, they dealt with that.
Yeah, we, we had a. Yeah, Mitchell, what we have, we have, we have second code enforcement officer and then he's, he's under the police department and he did our experience, we did originally was in his department, works, but then we moved to the police department because the last now is having it, there's something with about having somebody with the uniform on, make, come into compliance. However, if it's a, like you were just talking about being the cooperative type of the opportunities where you try and do actually engage them, not necessarily being that you're doing the enforcement right off the bat. So what we have, this is, we have a spec where you provide a courtesy letter right off the bat. And that's mostly because most people don't, just may not know what the word says. It's not that they're necessarily intentionally violating it, but a lot of times it's just an oversight. They have one extra car or, you know, the lawn's had a little law or they've got a bunch of tree in their yard and so forth that shouldn't be there and all kinds of things. And I would say a good chunk of them usually comply with that. Now, I, the reason I got involved once in a while, they served in closely, it's zoning violation. And that's when, that's when you get into the other things, so maybe an illegal use of the property. You know, or a violation of building code or fire code with that. And so that's one of the things, the way I think if you have somebody with the uniform that really makes a big difference, you know, right there. Plus, what happens too is the law enforcement is trained to preserve evidence because some unfortunately once in a while you'll have, may have to go to court on one. And so that's the reason, it's why the law enforcement has that training now to make sure, so if it did became, and that they had become an expert witness, it just seemed to be work a little bit easier. So that would be my experience, we had there. Now, I am aware that they used to have firm over in the East River and I had the person that I was, oh, it's gonna be gone today. Anyway, they had a firm over in East River for a while that they did a couple towns, they were pretty, it was company that you got a contract with them and we had them come and they, so they, they actually served a few towns within a particular area. I had, I was gonna call, I had a person to call, who's the president of code enforcement and see if they have one such, if there's such a company on the east side or the west side. Yeah, he wasn't available today, but I certainly could, should reach out to him if that would be helpful, just to see if there are some. But I know Davidson County helps out like two towns within our county to do code enforcement with them. So that's just some things as I would share with you, my experience with it, code enforcement. You just kind of. It, it can, it can be a daunting task, but the key is to just keep accurate documentation and add photographs and everything like that. That's just the key picture and then trying to make sure that you have, allow ample time sometimes to evade the nuisance, you know. Just because it just, you know, you get that you don't want to run into a due process issue if you're just really not, not giving them ample time to respond or anyone and so forth. And again, that's why law enforcement, you said children to help out. I'll answer any questions that we have. I've been doing, helping with code enforcement for a few years, so. Yeah.
Uh, Aaron.
Uh, one thing though, that it was mentioned law enforcement, one thing I wanna make sure of is that we don't look at the possibility of using our new marshal as code enforcement, because the last thing we need is people think he's just gonna yell out their lawns. We don't want him involved in that. I, I, I've heard that generally it's a bad idea to have your law enforcement doing code enforcement because people can just learn to hate him for a completely separate issue that he shouldn't have anything to do with. Kind of my two cents.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's, the law town, it's a big problem for us, or it's, or it's a, somebody who wasn't in law enforcement, maybe we had lots of, like, there's a gentleman that I know very well, he's my age, retired. He's a retired sheriff in the town and he ended up being the code enforcement, just happened to work. You know.
Interesting.
There's different philosophies, how you want to do that.
Okay, Dan, did you have a question?
Yeah, and I think the big thing we usually realize here is the same handful of people that never mow, that never trim, that don't clean up, you know, type situation, so it's not like we've got a city throughout the city that we're trying to overview here and try to regulate and have to go into an extremity of costs. For the most part, most of the old buildings in town have been taken care of, but we would have had a basement song that a lot of problems are. And letters to them circumstances and general conversations is what this board has already witnessed that they'd rather do. His call and give them ample time and let them know, hey, this is a problem, handle it, take it from there, I think will solve ninety percent of the problems, so.
Yeah, communication is the key. Again, like I said, I would say a good chunk of ours, we're just, they just, just were not aware of the ordinance. And like you said, it's a repeat ones and then then sometimes you have to, you know, a little bit of heavier hand.
Okay, so any other question about the third-party code enforcement or the which is tangential to the motion on the floor, which is about extending the limiting of enforcement of abatements for another six months? Do we have any questions on either of those? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, any motion carriers? So again, I'll state, because it was a point of confusion, I think last time, it's that of the health, safety and welfare portions of the ordinances are still gonna be enforced, so we still expect people to mow their lawns and to take care of the weeds and things like that because those obviously, you know, harbor pests, you know, and snakes and all kinds of things, big mosquitoes as well. So anyways, so just wanted to point that out. So very good. Let's move on to legal and Kent, I believe that is you, we're, you the annual review of open meeting laws.
Yeah, with the pass out to you is carried by the front end of the office and I also reviewed it. It is a very concise ominously asked questions of the dos and don'ts and requirements of the open meeting laws. And so going through it in its entirety, the biggest one that we keenly observe is the twenty-four hour notice for a meeting and kind of changes where in the agenda typically results. But sooner than twenty-four hours, but there are things that happen compared to time, record, that, that immediate notice, but when it's less than twenty-four hours, it's not gonna fly. There are exceptions to that with emergency meetings, which for truly emergent issues. But telephonic are okay, but there has to be an opportunity for public to hear the telephonic gathering of the lawmakers. I don't have a lot more to say about it specifically, but I would take questions.
Okay. Um, yeah, can you go over the twenty-four hour rule, maybe in a little more detail, so that we all can kind of get a good idea of what that is?
Right.
The the, the concept of a public hearing is to let citizens know exactly what the government is doing. What its local government is considering for action at the next meeting. And the agenda that we are relatively familiar with is what it is is a, is set for at least twenty-four hours ahead of a meeting. Again, preferably, you know, three or four days ahead of time. And what it does is it allows the citizenry to observe and be notified sufficiently. That's why when you see a call on action on a particular issue, if it's not specifically stated, that is that there are actions to be taken and it's simply a discussion topic and there have been times with a number of boards that I've consulted that it simply wasn't a sufficient description of what was gonna be considered under that particular topic. And the particular student, the the criteria. The criteria, as in the law, everything has got some gray area. But is that could a reasonable person know that? Uh, or understand that a particular issue is going to be voted upon. Uh, or otherwise taken action upon at, at the meeting. And if it's not clear, because it lacks, it lacks specificity when it comes to. How a certain issue is going to be addressed or what's going to be voted on, then you can't do it, you can't go on. So that's probably the most important things in open meeting laws and notifying people of a meeting.
Hey, do we have any other comments or questions for him on that?
More of a suggestion, given that this has had fair amount of visibility, should we put this up on the website? Under additional documents as a standalone, so it's always there for people to reference.
Great. I think so. That's good. I mean, I gotta copy that. Yeah, and.
That second tree, there's more.
On, um, on that topic. Uh, for the twenty-four hours, I noticed down here it says, uh, a couple of things. Public bodies are strongly encouraged to provide at least twenty-four hours notice of all agenda items. So as to be fair to the public and to avoid dispute. Also, um. Typically, the public body adopts the final agenda upon convening the meeting, which we do every meeting. At the time the final agenda is adopted, the governing body may add or delete agenda items and may also change the order of business. That's usually, we do that too occasionally. We did tonight. Uh, and but it says here, new items cannot be added after the agenda has been adopted. So. I mean, basically, you know, after we run through it at the beginning of the meeting and then, um. Like, first, this tonight, we added the floodplain administrator, um, to the agenda under engineer. And then we adopted the agenda. So then after that point, we're not allowed to change it, right?
Right. And, and the thing is, if it's less than twenty-four hours. Although you can change, make changes to the agenda, it can't be on items, any items that would require. Or set for going to have, uh, a vote, any kind of action taken on that. And that, of course, was not, you know.
Okay. All right, very good. Okay, well, it doesn't look like, uh, I mean, does that, does that wrap up everything you'd like to talk about on this camp?
Yeah, I, I think so. It's just very, it's a very helpful tool. That's a very self-explanatory.
Okay. Okay, very good. All right, well, um, Aaron.
Just one curiosity kind of pointing to is it's the agenda, but it doesn't really discuss anything regarding supporting documents, contents of the packet. That's all independent seemingly from the open meeting law. Really just make sure the agenda is posted, right? Doesn't necessarily cover the package, like our packets. Is there are times when we have something that we want on the agenda, but we might not get the actual supporting documentation till that morning? And we, it's, it's almost emergency action.
Right. There's, you're exactly right. There's no requirement that the agenda and. All the contents of the, uh, that are going to be subject to the session be published or set forth in that twenty-four hour period. Or in any other notice, uh, attack, you know, notice.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I think that's an interesting point to make as well. All right, very good. Does anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to ask or discuss on the open meeting laws? Okay. Sounds good then. All right. Well, thank you very much, everybody. Let's, uh, move right along to public hearing. Oh, seven, oh, that's right, yeah. Public hearing was scheduled for seven P M. And we are. What is that? Seven minutes, seven minutes early. So let's go ahead, take a seven minute recess. And we'll reconvene at seven P M. To begin the publication. So, were you able to get a hold of Linda?
You like that?
Um, I mean, it's, it's kind of. Yeah, I mean, but. Yeah, the thing about this one was it charges fast, at least on this one.
On our signs. Sign that we put on the corner. And if you guys need anything from the board. To bring it or anything like that.
How does that work? Well, usually what happens is.
Typically, I think we get a. Hopefully, once we get done at four seven, then I will take these two. Yeah, if that's okay, and I'll make your fair board meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. If we put into the D O K, the freight, you guys have any concerns with the upgrade route that's been done for.
I don't believe so. I mean, they basically, as you probably know, you submitted to them, they just submit it to us and we approve it. I think they just want to.
Make sure everybody's culture.
Yeah, just have to go through the board and the board have the, yeah, they're okay.
Then you, you send this to the state?
I use, I have.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Absolutely.
I just, I just, um.
So they can have an account in the system. Well, and I think we want to, when they need it, they should call the office or if it's after hours, they can call me. Or Chuck, I mean, Chuck is gonna let me know. And I can do the beginning. So we have stuff on our day down. They can submit theirs and I should go on that. Other thing too is. They might be just getting water, but they, for a long time there. But for a long time, they drag their thousand gallons tank over and get thousand gallons of water. So. It'd be, so we're gonna have to make sure that.
It just got torn by hassle.
Oh, really? Get it Sunday afternoon.
Well, I think, um, at some point we may have like a card lock system and. Deal set up in a turnaround somewhere, somebody can go away and swipe their. Then it'll be kind of like a, you know, like a fuel pump. And so if there's a big demand out there.
I got more papers. So I've printed out, uh, the annexation.
Oh, nice.
Got some documentation, finally put it all together. I'd be able to. Cost of this, it's a great part, helped us out.
Uh, a couple, yeah. I mean, there's one lady been trying to get a hold of me, but she's. Or something, and it's just when they're passing through. Um, yes, I mean.
I've got too many projects.
Oh, really? I mean, you could just, you could just say, off to the side, get through it and get through it. That's all I'm gonna do anyway, if I don't get around the money to get it.
Are, is one of the other board members on the phone at all tonight? So, I'm assuming he'll.
Yeah, but we're.
I was just sitting there going.
Yeah, and, and I wanted to make sure we addressed it before we got here and. And so the way that this works fairly is, this is the license application. Right? So we can vote on the license applications. And if it is approved, then we move on to the operating.
We get this going.
This isn't going to affect me. So I would vote on it if you need to vote. Yeah.
Nothing wrong with playing it safe.
I just stopped you.
All right, everybody, as it is now, uh, seven oh two and a half. Let's reconvene and have the public hearing for. The, um, off sale liquor license. So I think I'll just go ahead and read what it says on the hearing here. So notice of public hearing for, excuse me, sir, for a new application for a package, uh, off sale liquor license. On new application for a package off sale liquor license, which has been presented to the Hermosa Town Board and filed with the finance officer. Notice is hereby given that the town board in and for the town of Hermosa, Custer County, South Dakota. Will hear and consider the applications for new application for package off sale liquor license to operate within the municipality. For the calendar year of twenty twenty-five at the regular meeting of their Hermosa Town Board to be held on the. Eighth of July, twenty twenty-five at the hour of seven P M. At the Hermosa Town Office of said day, which is today. And the applicant is Pop's Grocery Shop, Lot One of G and G Sub in the town of Hermosa. Notice is further given that any persons or their attorney may appear and be heard at said scheduled public hearing. Who are interested in the approval or rejection of any such application. And this was posted on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. So very good. Well, let's, let's begin. Is there anybody who'd like to speak on this, um, application? Nobody? Bill, would you like to just get up and restate your point for us? Restate your position?
I guess I'm the one for the five, so obviously, I would. I think it would be good for the community to have more option and. Those services provided. So.
Okay, I'm just calling Linda real quick here. So, bear with me for a second. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on behalf of this application? I didn't matter here, we're here, um, at the public hearing right now. So, um, Phil just spoke and. We're seeing if anybody else would like to speak on the application. And it doesn't look like there is. So, um, anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Sir, I just want to make sure that we got everything settled with the state and everything's cool there.
Yeah, I believe so, Terry.
Yes, um. Cause we're just approving the license tonight and then we'll have to, we'll have to deal with the operating agreement. And I've conferred with Kent as well.
I just wanted to make that part of a matter of record that the approval will go forward tonight so you can data operate seamlessly.
Okay.
Now, we also, um, carefully, uh, consider applicants' request of, of reduction of fees. So, um, at this time, we will. Uh, amend the operating agreement with all parties together.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Bill?
I believe at the last meeting, it's, there was a suggestion made that you guys would tackle that within a certain amount of time. And one percent, it was like sixty days or ninety days, is that correct?
Yeah.
What do you think, sixty days?
Yeah, I mean, what is the board doing on that or think about that?
Um. Yeah, soon as we can get it done, I just think, you know.
So our guest at the last meeting, I thought it was gonna be where. He was gonna be approved so he could start operating on a regular basis of the ordinance. Then within thirty days, you guys were gonna try to have it where you were regulating it. Put a different ordinance together for the grocery store side of it. And that way then he would have a reduction after that. From basis of that, so he didn't have to wait for a long period of operational function. Take advantage of all upcoming events, so.
Well, it would.
Yes.
It would, uh, by approving it tonight, it shouldn't affect him whatsoever. On being able to operate seamlessly, like I said, continue to do everything. He wanted to do or can do under the law or having the license and applying it and, uh, making it productive for you. Um, but if it's, if it's thirty days, it's, um, great. But if it requires a, that's the question, requires a change in the ordinance. At this point, I'm not sure it does. But if it does, then you have first trading and second trading, so right, already there's. Thirty days, um, that's the God on it next time, two weeks. So you're looking at least a month and a half, but most likely, hopefully sixty days really get on it. And I'll, I'll give it that priority. But you'll be able to function all through that period of the ordinance as it is.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, and Terry, didn't, didn't you talk to the lady at the state? We, we can't carve out a grocery store off sale license.
There's not a, there's only one off, off sale license you can apply for. And she said the control the town has is in their operating. And she said the control the town has is in their operating agreements, and that's where you have to reflect them.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we can't create new genres of licenses.
Yeah, so basically the the only thing that we would be we wouldn't even be changing it because there is no operating agreement right now, correct? Right now, we're just going for the license application.
What's being considered now is the license application with, is there an operating agreement on file?
Not yet, I mean.
Okay, okay, so there never has been, I didn't know.
No, he's a new applicant, so he would, we have our standard oper- operating or standard agreement, that other one that the M D O has, and we would just replicate that.
Gotcha.
I mean, yeah, but the ordinance says that fee is three hundred and fifty dollars a month plus five percent of the alcohol sale.
Yeah, okay. Now, do you amend the ordinance to make it um a number of system close to kind of what you were suggesting, although I don't recall specifically what that was, but if you have uh, if it goes from three fifty to two fifty, it's full on. Um, then, of course, it would also have built a block at the corner pantry and higher volume outfits. Because of that, you know, because it has to be consistent with that. You have the authority to do that, but it has to apply across the board.
Yeah, and uh, Aaron?
Um, that's, that's one thing that stood out as a bit peculiar with this ordinance is that there are fees directly listed in the ordinance where typically we, we reserve that for the fee schedule. It gives us uh adaptability. I think if we were to rewrite the ordinance, it would be to where it essentially says the fees and such will be handled through an operator's agreement and the fee schedule, so that way we don't, if we do need to make these little cases functional, we don't have to draft ordinances and go to that extent, it would give us uh a lower level of authority over the fees and such that don't involve the full redrafting of ordinances.
Yeah, not, not redrafting, right, just be a slight amendment, so.
Right.
I'm not ninety, I'm about ninety percent sure it's the same process to do an amendment, it is a patent ordinance, because essentially the law can't handle things, but it's a little bit different.
So um as an example, since it mentions the fees in the ordinance, the amendment could just say, refer to the fee schedule. And then we pass that as the amendment to the ordinance. And then we can just correct, make changes to the fee schedule as a board action via motion.
Right, right.
Okay. That's interesting, Dan?
So exactly as what you just said, then, any change though that fee schedule would also apply to corner pantry, so if he's waived on a two hundred and fifty a year five percent only, then corner pantry will follow that same fee schedule.
Absolutely, well, and I know and uh might as well bring it up in our offline conversations, we, we were discussing um are there ways in which we can make the fee schedule um fair and applicable to all, but sl- on a sliding scale based on the business and, and not based on the name of the business or who owns the business, but the number of operating hours that the business has. And so if we were to peg corner pantry, which I believe is a twenty four seven business at the full rate which they pay now then any business that has an operate, operating hours less than that, it would just basically be a dollar per operating hour fee schedule per month.
Sure.
So I think that that may be a way that we can kind of more fairly treat um applicants or retailers, because they can cover theirs pretty well, being a twenty four seven operation, whereas Pop's Groceries is an open twenty four seven, and if they're expected to pay the same amount of monthly fee, that's kind of an imbalance there as well, so um I think that, that may be uh one way to resolve it, but uh, Dan, you had your hand up?
Yeah, now, does corner pantry or two different licenses?
An off sale and an off sale?
Uh, one, no, they have, they have.
Right, they have. But it's for two different businesses. It's all empty oil, but one's for the corner pantry and the other one's for that. So the off sale is for the quick shop at the corner pantry and then their on sale is for the, the bar part, yep. So and it's split, it's the same address, but different suite numbers.
Okay, so um, you know, Aaron?
And, and just a point, like what you're talking about, sliding scale is we're shortly gonna have a third one.
We, as of July first, we, we can offer another off sale.
Okay.
A lot changed, so, yep, so we'll get three off sale and three.
So if we implement that adaptability now, then I mean, who knows, you know, maybe there is gonna be another business that might wanna do something specialty in a.
Well, yeah.
Well, and we can get ahead of the game rather than like we did grocery store right now as a private do that, and all right, well, then next time it comes around cigar bar, and we're gonna do a special one for cigar, you know?
Right, yeah.
We need a, a broad spectrum coverage with whatever we do that applied to everyone equally.
Yeah, and tha- and that's a good point that we can, we could make uh any necessary changes now that would basically be future proof or anything that were come uh into town later on, so.
Hmm.
Yeah, very good. Um, so would anyone like to make the motion to approve the application?
I make the motion, we approve the application.
Hey, Dawn makes the motion.
I will second that motion.
Okay, Linda seconds. Had a nice discussion beforehand, but is there any further discussion on the matter? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we did have one extension. So thank you, Aaron, for that exposure, even if uh at the end, it may not have been a hundred percent necessary, but I appreciate your uh willingness to make sure that everything's on the up and up, so thank you very much. Now we go on to Public Works and um so I see that John was not able to make it tonight, so. Yeah, so he has. Three miles, so that's all. Keep chucking on our thoughts and prayers. Um so, Terry, do you have any street department updates?
Um, just to confirm, did uh the letter from Mark get?
It just got held back, so I won't do it for saying.
All right, thanks for coming, Bill.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Bill.
So Mark's um letter, once that's, it's him, he said they should be able to get on the North Second by the end of this month.
Okay.
To get that project started. Um, and other than that, we're forecasting uh going over our budget to look, really, we're gonna have to look at the street budget over the long term, look, maybe you'll have to sit down one day and dig into that to see how feasible it is to do that chip ceiling. Um, but other than that, streets are kind of just posting right now. Um, fairground is still not good.
Mm-hmm.
Um but uh yeah, I think that's, oh, there is this, um, there was a sign out uh for the milk group trucks on Whitney, and it was reported that truck was seen trying to back out, apparently they turned down Whitney.
So.
Tried to go around and ended up trying to back out of the highway. So I wanna see if there's anything we need to check with uh DOT or anybody to see if there's like a way to make sure trucks, trucks know ahead of time, so they don't turn down a street, hit a sign saying they can't go down that road and then try to pack up. Because I don't think it's a go badly once for it to be really bad.
Yeah, well, that's a bad decision on his part, but yeah, um. I mean, I imagine he probably would have been okay to have continued and gone back to Main Street and gone his merry way.
Yeah.
Or even just down the curve, so.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, no through, no, no truck traffic or something like that, but um, yeah, that's just a bad call from that trucker.
Yeah. I don't think it's something that.
I think he's probably lost. Honestly.
Yeah.
Because he wouldn't have been that afraid of beating Hermosa, you know, like that.
One thing I thought about is right now it's only X feet from the highway, but if it was down past fifth um just just past it, so he could, he could swing out to the pit to get back to the highway rather than uh going down around Whitney, if that's really a good concern, but I don't even know, so. It's just something I wanted to point out, because.
Well, there's no bridges that would have any weight limits or anything like that. So if that sign is causing some problems maybe we should just revisit how we address the you know, communicate, you know, the signage. You know, i- it's not a disaster for trucks to go that way if it's one, once in a while.
Right.
It's only when they're beaten down on it that it's a problem. If that's not a problem, we should get rid of that sign. So it'll cause the incident.
Yeah.
Problem to bad in the past, and it wouldn't be able to add thing like here, so move the sign up closer to the highway, so they do see it, and even on fifth we've had them turn on there, they destroy up the shoulders, you think oil's bad, wait till they get into the yard. Coming down Whitney, they tend to wanna grab the edges, where we've got that big culvert is not a good circumstance, and then anything on Whitney and coming up second we've had problems too, where they meet a car, they're over into the shoulder, they're destroying the shoulder, they're not looking back, they're gone, they're gone. You know, and if you don't have law enforcement
Yeah.
to stop them, and that's why the other sign is just before violation, they're right at that level, so that they don't continue that way. And if they're gonna, we're hoping that they'll take violence the first and come back out around stay on the gravel and not destroy our shoulders, not destroy our roads.
Also what street is that, that you put, that you put on that gravel and when you use for that?
Third Street.
Okay, there was a big semi parked on that street all weekend. And I would think that there shouldn't be something, a sign that says no.
Like a truck that was listening?
He lives, right, now he lives, now everybody having to turn, I, you know, it just, we just need to eliminate it, that's why we have to first stop. I mean, he can bring his tractor down, but he doesn't need to bring a trailer down.
Okay, there.
Uh, so I don't know, maybe I should call DOT, see how close we can bring it to the highway.
Yeah, so you and I were talking about, or no, maybe it was Cal and I, we were talking about program that Benish does through our transportation group where, because I was trying to find a solution for Miles City, Montana, they got themselves in a big situation where we don't have any money for the roads.
Huh.
And uh, so I'm like, what can we do that isn't gonna cost harder than anything? And they had like a, almost like, it was like a S- S- XL based, but they had already built it all out, and they let, they give it to the town. And they were gonna come here, we were gonna hit like four or five towns and visit them and basically explain our Benish method of asset management for roads, and it was gonna cover roads, parks, things like that. You know, ancillary stuff to roads. And so like that might help in terms of categorizing different roads based on their traffic volumes or potential for those types of things, because you know, there's a perception that if you turn on Whitney, you could get a shortcut around some of this uh construction, and that could be part of it, because right now it's, it's currently kind of a mess, uh, the traffic control. Um, so, but I think DOT would, it would prefer to see like a traffic impact study or like they delay it off on us to study the traffic impact to see if uh um, you know, maybe a, you know, turn lane or something allows them to see, oh, wait a minute, I see the sign now. And they're not in traffic, so they're not under stress, and they can just go back into traffic, you know what I mean? So that could be some, there could be some um mechanism in flow, traffic flow, that would be needed. That would be the result of a traffic study. So that could be it. Now, we could ask them to give us money for a traffic study, because we could say there's an issue.
Well, so that's, that's another thing. Um, I've heard there was at some point in the past a traffic study done at the intersection of like
We can request that's been done.
I wanna, well, I wanna request one to be done at the appropriate time of year, because I heard last time it was done at something, remember, we need one done in like July, when we have the tourist volume. And what I, what I would see hopeful end result, a light up there that's yellow when it's low traffic, but a natural light when it's high traffic. Because there are times when we are, we're, we are having issues with people getting in and out of there and getting smashed into, we had a, we had a dump truck blown open.
Yeah, it's, it's not, it's not a hundred percent safe, that whole field there.
What's that?
That whole hump there is, is known to not be that safe.
Right.
So there's gotta be some studies, and if you request what studies have been done, they could, there'd be recommendations in those studies that may never have been followed. That might be a good first step, and DOT would oblige you those things.
All right.
Maybe, maybe get a copy for the marshal too, so he knows.
Do you have a phone number?
Uh, yeah, I'll get you his.
Fortunately, that study that they did do is when that family here on the corner died, and so they slowed traffic down fifty, fifty five knots. That was the last, I mean, we've done, they, how many times, they just refused, how many deaths you have to have.
Right. It's not working, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, very, yeah, so uh, doing a little thing yesterday trolling around, I know a lot of people avoid this Main Street, they do hit back there, but they're hitting fast. Like that barring road, they're hitting it quick, I definitely like ran over, and I had to go and move, maybe sat a little my lights on. So people can see that there's law enforcement there, because they, they didn't care if they were there. So if you could get something there, it's like a a warning or hey, you need to slow down, this is not, this intersection area is unsafe, because cars going in and out, got different directions. Just kind of something there, I'm pretty sure somebody could grant that.
So maybe uh another flashing speed sign that maybe even shows their speed like we have up at school.
Well, they have one down there at that end.
And there's a radar sign that shows.
They bought those too.
Talking about on Whitney, just, yeah, that's what, that's what they're mentioning, Deb and Eric.
I'm just saying that if, if Eric gets around and people see that we now have, you're gonna see him slowing down, because right now we're just crazy.
Yeah, and I know I'd love to see him hand out some, you know, we've blocked somebody going too fast, hand out some big tickets. And, and that word will get around quick. And then we can get people slowing down, and then if permitted as well, if you could do that up on the highway and, and just make, make it understood that Hermosa is not somewhere where you wanna be speeding through. You know, so, Deb?
Even if you wanna go down to the, they're having a meeting down there, and the fairgrounds right now, I mean, how, how, how much, you have to hear the credit. I mean, you can meet a lot of them down there, because there's some of the old people down there.
I'm going down there to see if I can go through it, why not?
Yeah, introduce it though, so we'll let people know.
Oh, yeah. And then the freeway thing you're talking about, stopping people there. I have extra jurisdiction on that, that, that stretch there, so I can do that, and it works out for us, as long as we pass that that jurisdictional uh spot for you, so I can, I know it's actually really where I'm stopping, I can continue on, so.
Eric, the jurisdiction is uh, was in the town limits.
Right.
So the town limits now extends all the way to Pennington County line, right?
Really?
You should, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and I got the uh.
You should be able to get all the way up there.
And then I got the blessing from the sheriff to do stuff in his county, or in his county, so.
Nice.
Little extension there too.
Yeah, give you some flexibility.
Very good. Okay, Aaron?
So we do have a sign that was attacked and is kind of not in the greatest shape in the garage, but if I can bring it back to life, what I would wanna do is put it on put it on something we can move. So we have one that can be mobilized and put in different pa- places that we have down when we want to. If that thing can come back to life, I think that'd be a good use for it.
It's a radar speed sign.
Yeah, it's the same, like the, the one that got smashed down there, it's mangled, I think it can be straightened out.
Okay.
Brought back to life with a little put some of the magic smoke back in it and get it on something.
Somebody hit it? Hit the speed sign?
And they're exerting pain, there was a run west and then run with the cops off of seventy nine, and get third gear and lost it.
Oh, wow.
And knew that sign had entered the fence.
That was a follow up.
No, damn.
All right, well, let's uh move along with the water and sewer department updates. Uh, Anthony, you'd like to cover that for us?
Yeah, sure. Um, so we uh received our discharge permit today. Um, it allows us to discharge from our new wastewater treatment plant into the Battle Creek. Um, it was very weird, it required me to leave a voicemail for the deputy director of D A and R saying hey, we've been waiting on this since the winter time. And he never called me back, he just issued it to Terry, uh, Terry's email, so, yeah. Whatever, whatever works, right? So um so that's, that's big, big news. Um, so we're doing sampling right now to see where we're at, because the treatment plant's running in recirculation right now, so if uh, if we get past all our tests, then we'll start discharging. Uh, the, the line uh that Peruk Construction or uh Peruk Advantage put in, it's ready to use. Uh, the, the line uh, that Baruk Construction or uh, Baruk Advantage put in, it's ready to use. So, they replaced the trough already. Um, with water, um, we've got, we're just, we, we just had our pre-bid meeting at four thirty.
Are we gonna get rid of all that other concrete crap that's been there while they've got that huge Joe's pile?
Yeah.
Have it go away.
I believe that he said he would take it away.
You know.
It was a part of the deal.
I think that's what the original meeting where we discussed him being a contractor, I think we kind of.
Yep.
We made that uh, part of the deal.
Seeing in the past, with all that koshia weeds coming up along the top edges, when we used to use one chemical. And they'd come out and treat that, feeling out the problems that we do right now and it would keep it totally clean. I mean, everything is looking so good down here. And as a matter of a person chemically got in here. Had to get after it. I mean, otherwise, you're gonna have them four to five foot tall again.
Well, I'll have them uh, haul all that concrete out of there now that they finished the, down by the Battle Creek, the rip red. They know, they know what they don't need anymore. Um, so that was a part of removing the trough, cause they had to haul that all out. Um, and then they can grade all that and get it seeded or whatever, and then it's easier to smelt it and maintain it.
Might be something you guys might put on sewer budget to have more chemical come down. Do a spray on all of the tops, because you're gonna have it on every one of the cells.
Yeah.
And if you don't stay ahead of it now.
So it's sprayed on the burn as well?
Yep, yep. And now we kill all the koshia, so every week, I mean, you've got a good crop of them going again.
Yeah. Is there a, is there an approved chemical that we can use for that?
Yeah, it's the only thing I was worried about is if there's any washout into the little gains, would it affect any of the chemistry? Um, but I'll talk to them and.
They have stages that they watch the weather after a twenty-four hour period and stable. And then you're gonna go, they don't use any granulars, which are really a good one, but you can't put them in fine, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thanks for reminding us of that.
Um, so I was just saying at four thirty, we had our pre-bid meeting on the water, North Water Tank. We had uh, four contractors show up to the pre-bid. Uh, Mainline Construction, RCS, Quinn and Rob from Baruk Advantage. Um, I took them to the top of the hill, showed them the panel that's been built in Detroit, ready for use on the north tank. They were kinda surprised uh, that it's ready to plug and play, but I said, it was just a necessity and it was a tank that uh. Panel we already had, so it was a weird request to have someone take that existing panel and change it. Um, showed them the pumps that are coming out of the, the old booster station and what they have to do, basically remove that assembly out. And then um, took them to the top of the hill where the, where the new tank's gonna be. They didn't have any comments about access road. Um, in fact, Quinn is doing what's called Big Blue and Oxeller, which I. Was, was uh, working on. And that road is way worse to get to that tank. And sou- southern box elder than, than our road that we've got after what, we had rained two days ago, so. So I think that, that's good, because I was, I was worried that, you know, they would say something about, you know, we need to improve this road and. You know, we don't, we don't really wanna spend that budget, so it sounds like they'll, they'll beat it up, but they said that, I said, we have some budgets that you've already pre-approved. For improvements on that road. Really, it was just along the highway, hopefully that's, we don't need to spread that out, but. Um, that's a, a dedicated easement for the town to get to the top of the hill, so. You know, we'll work on that with the Preston's development, so that that road's getting improved gradually. And we can constantly maintain that road to get up to the top of the tank there. So, looks like we're gonna have all four bidders bid on it, so. Um, other than that, uh, the next bid that we're putting out is for the WRT. It's gonna be a request for seal bids through um, the local newspaper. Uh, we'll probably put it on BidNet as well. And I do have some drawings that um, they'll be able to use to bid on it. But it's primarily a package system that a contractor is installing, so. Uh, you know, we'll, very specific people interested in bidding on it that work with that type of technology. So that'll be the next thing out, hopefully this month. Well, this month, but hopefully the next week or two.
Yeah, that's.
That's it.
Very good.
Yeah, okay.
So let me ask you this too, I know um, in our conversation earlier today, we discussed the um, type of. Piping that's inside the water tanks, where the water tanks are both fed and drained from the bottom only.
Yeah.
And that, that leads to stagnation of water in the tank as well as uh, the mixing of the chlorine. Doesn't mix very well and it can kinda settle in the bottom.
Yeah.
And so when we go to um, repair the tank. Should consider adding a pipe that goes to the top. So that it's fed into the top and rearranged from the bottom, so that we're get, getting constantly circulation of. Chlorine and the drinking water.
Yep.
And then the water in that tank will not stagnate. And then if that's our main tank that also feeds the other tank. And by definition, that other tank will not have stagnant water either.
Yeah.
Because i- if we keep it kind of, I guess we, we'd have to look at that again, but. We certainly have one thing that is not stagnating and causing uh, issues with chlorine.
Yeah, so in the water system, it's gonna be a bit of a musical chairs. Um, we have to maintain, we maintain enough water and storage at all times, enough uh, going, you know, our well. The one going, so getting the second one going. Um, I was talking um, to. Uh, different potential bidders about how to, so like where should, where should I end? So like, these four bidders in the pre-bid got a little preview of the next thing, because I needed to show them some of that drawing. To show them what's up on top of the hill that they're moving. And so, I got a little input from them on how the next bit should be put together in terms of the confines of. People's areas of expertise. Um, so. Well, one is at the Battle Creek, we have to keep it going, but that well actually needs service. It needs some service uh, in terms of, you know, the pump and things like that, because that pump has to now pump another hundred feet ahead. That pushes it through the WRT. So that WRT equates to like a hundred feet ahead and you're pushing it through. And it's a start-stop, so it slams open and then it slams shut. When it slams open, the water all flows up the hill. When it slams shut, it all comes back. And then it hi- it hammers on that, on that well pump and then it does it again. So it's really hard on the pump, we need to try to make that into VFE. Drives that'll slowly start it, slow, then slowly let off. So that'll extend the life of those pumps drastically. I'm talking, they said two, three times as long as you normally would last. So, just things like that have to be considered when we're um. When we're making those repairs, so if we're taking the tank down to put that pipe inside it and do the repair, I gotta have the north tank online. To give us the, you know, give us back, that'll give us over three hundred thousand gallons of storage, which still not a lot, but. Better than being way down.
Yeah, Dan?
So you'll have additional check valves and tubes that you'll put in down there to slow down?
Uh, slam? No, it uh, will have, it'll get pumped, it's a dedicated line.
Right.
So it'll get, it'll get pumped to the treatment plant, where once it goes into the treatment plant, it goes through a check valve. At that point, that water will stay full between, in that dedicated line versus. Right now, it goes without any check valve into the basic tank, cause otherwise it wouldn't work.
Correct.
The same pipe that goes in and goes out, so.
But can you do a check valve valve here?
There's one in the pump.
Right.
That'll hold that amount of water.
And when it does come.
Yeah.
Then you've got this one where it won't slam through.
It's just the water in the pipe.
Correct.
Yeah, not the whole tower on it.
No.
Yeah, and the other thing too is the current design, the pump has to pump. Against the head of the tank itself. Because, you know, with all the extra pressure of all the water sitting in there, it's kinda interesting, but uh, not in a good way. Okay, uh, I think that's pretty good, yeah. You have anything else for water, sir?
No, no, okay.
Okay, um, I don't see any open work orders in the packet, do you have any sitting up here today? Well, we'll have to look at those next time. Um, so for the contract street, that will be you, Dan?
Yeah, and I think the big thing with the rains, uh, washed a lot of corners and ruts in the areas that seem to be re uh. Just been reapplied, re-levelled. So, somewhere. Whether you want me to go on with doing that or how you want me to approach them, you know, on. Time wise and stuff, I mean, um, it's obvious how my other contract has been over a year and a half and I've never collected. It just the way it is, but it's a matter of whether, still in essence with what's happening, most everything is held really well. There's corners here and there uh, that really need to be applied and I will. This week get through them, act it some holders that I have prepared, so that you guys have them. Know an idea where I'm at, if we have a well beyond, you can approve it if you so choose or if you don't, that's. Your, your opportunity to do on that one, so.
Okay, do you have any input on there?
Yeah, if you wanna leave, cause we, we're missing a couple of our folks tonight, you wanna leave those in the office and when you get a chance and everybody can just come by and grab?
Go by it and go over it with one of the two of you, uh, so that you're aware of what it is, why it is, by it reads. So that way you've got an idea of what's going on.
Yeah.
That way you can explain to everybody else.
Uh, yeah, and I'll get out there and um, take pictures of the water damage, cause I'm sure that's something we're gonna wanna uh. Prioritize, but then again, you know, I mean, if we do it right now, this storm, if this storm barrage doesn't hold up, we'll just be. Running, chasing our tails, cause these storms have been pretty, pretty heavy.
Normal.
Yeah.
And that's the one thing with mag water, when we used to do that, was such a win-win, cause it's sealed at the top. After we got done propping everything.
Yeah.
And it would take the runoff and uh, the damages down to a tenth of what they are, you know, and most of them. What I did is change the amount of millions on some of the real harsh areas, like Fourth Street was a good example. Uh, Fifth Street was a good example, Fourth here and Third were good examples where I used millions. And alleviated problems, really settlement, held them a lot better.
Yeah, I think I'll go out, I'll do a special, grab, grab a load and stuff.
Okay.
So um, have you, have you tried the Silver Smith system for the roads, the road layer?
I have not, I have a ton of stuff I gotta upload into there.
So Cal's been doing it and sent me a work order just to try it out. We had a, a suspected sanitary sewer before. We're not really sure yet if that was an inflow or outflow, but um, so he used that system to tell me where it happened at. And it shot out an email to me, which then I got and I said, okay, what's this? I click on it, it opens up Silver Smith on my phone. And it zoomed in on the spot. So if you wanted to do that with Dan, then you could. Get his emails and those things that need work orders done, you could put them on there and then it would open on his phone and zoom in. You don't need to have anything installed on your phone, it'll just go in the browser. You don't need an app. So then it's hard to say, well, it's this corner of this town, you know, I know you could just use court cardinal directions, but if it's something in the middle. Of a stretch of road that washed out, that would give you a way to find it.
Right. Most of everything that I cut the edges on, on manure and violence survived wonderfully. I mean, it really made a difference, even on Whitney, it saved us a lot of disasters over there too, so.
And also with the picture, you might know what you need to bring out, so you can just come up with what you need.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have, and I attached pictures, both of the suspected overflow and also the. Surrounding vegetation, which uh, you could see of a difference, so. Uh, and then you can also, like you said, I tied mine to an asset, but you could probably tie it to a pin if there was no asset nearby in the. Case of the streets. The asset being the specific item of the infrastructure. You know, so if it's just a street corner that has nothing on it, plus you probably wouldn't wanna tag it to like a hydrant, even if it was right there. Just tag it to a pin on the street, so you can do that, right, Anthony?
You could do it to the street, it's a leak, it's a li- line, so you can pick a line, a line segment. If that makes sense, or if you wanted to get more specific, you could tag it to the parcel that it's closest to.
The Jason parcel, yeah.
So it could be that we tag it to the line of the street and then the picture makes it apparent where on that line it will be.
Yep, yep. Yeah, and you could write in front of address, whatever.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, you could do, keep it in the road layer, yeah, that's probably better.
And I should be able to log into Silver Smith mobile, right?
Yeah, yeah, I've got the same username password.
Yeah, it's, it basically looks the same as it does on the computer, you just go right through the browser. Yeah, I have it on, I have it on here, so when I'm walking around out in the field, I used it today when we were talking to contractors, they wanted to know how big a pipe was. You go, oh, they pull it up, pull it up, told them.
Oh yeah?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Okay, well, um, so, Dan, do you have anything further on that? Okay, very good, well, thanks for, thanks for staying on top of that for us and, and it sounds like uh, your prior work has been. Upheld well in all these storms we've had recently, which have been a lot. Yeah, thanks, thank you for that. Um, let's move along to the new economic development section where uh, our 16th liaison, Aaron, will give an update.
Yeah, we had a both HAGD and Connects last night, meetings, pretty good, so I just did a. Pretty clear breakdown of the different things we touched on. Um, we had representative, uh, representation, McDonough was there, Terry was there, Eric was there, so they got a. We kind of invaded their meetings, but they didn't mind. Um, just simple things, working on their website, trying to streamline that. They're actively trying to remu- recruit more members to join Connects. Um, that's more of the uh, community side of it, HAGD is more of the uh, land and that sort of thing. Um, so they are looking for people to join, don't have to have a business around, you could, it's just, yeah, pretty much anybody can join now, I understand. Um, the Huxter was a big one, uh, looking at their turnout as well as uh, just how logistics and everything went. They're looking at adjusting when they do it during the year next year, possibly trying to align it with the rock show. So that they can line up with all the food trucks and everything and play off of each other, cause their vendors are kind of a different ballgame than the rock show. Um, and there was some discussion about the um, shutting down the road, gave them a little bit of, there was a little weirdness. When they had to shut down the road, little confusion with traffic, but um, so they'll try to dial that in tighter for next year. Um, they're working on their vision statements and such. Um, one big thing is they want to do bulk mailers to. Every resident in the five seven seven four four, as well as apparently um, the area code for Fairburn. Listing uh, mailers with names and phone numbers of all the businesses within, within that territory and do bulk mailers to every resident. Within that territory, so they're um, they're on the agenda, I put them on for the next agenda on the twenty-second. To talk to us about maybe seeing if we consider using some BBB funds for that. Uh, the numbers and don't quote me, cause you know, they're numbers and I don't remember, something like four hundred to eight hundred. To do the, a mail blast of every, so every resident would know all the businesses and they had like eighty-something businesses on that list. So, yeah, yeah, it's a lot. Um, then the big, big part of the meetings was the HAGD. Um, talking about the Custer Ambulance Service, so the Rapid City Fire Department is dropping us. Most likely, and we might get another year out of it, is kind of how it sounds. They're um, they were contracted at like two thousand dollars a year. Next year, it's gonna jump up to just shy of sixty thousand dollars.
Whoa.
Well, they wrote the contract, he said, back in two thousand seven. So, two thousand dollars was a parlay fair back then. And now they were doing it for two thousand dollars. Yes, so, yeah, but um. Custer Ambulance Service, they're what else, covers the other, the Custer District right now and um, they were there to talk to HAGD about. Possibilities and, and feedback on creating a new district here, once we lose the Rapid City Fire Department coverage. Or expanding the current Custer Ambulance District and in the process, building a um. Two, two bay ambulance building on that, where we're getting the dirt. So that was, um, that was big, big, big part of the meeting. Something, yeah, they talked a lot of numbers that I don't even remember all of them. Something, yeah, they talked a lot of numbers that I don't even remember all of them, but, um. Yeah, what were the other, any other points in that? Oh, and childcare development. So they did that plan. They brought us, they brought forward, uh, six months ago, something like that, about doing childcare survey. They got the survey back, um, kind of the feedback they got is that they don't necessarily need a childcare facility. It would be helpful to town to have more coordination of the at-home childcare services that are being provided. But Connect, they've kind of gar- gone as far as they can, because none of them are really like focused in or looking to focus their lives as daycare providers, or looking for anybody in the community who essentially wants to take the data from that survey and run with it and start working with the home, at-home daycares with the school and try to coordinate and expand on it. So they're just looking for anybody in the community who would be interested in getting involved with that, kind of as like, maybe you could call them a daycare, daycare liaison, I don't know, in the long term. Uh, yeah.
Great.
And I think that's about it.
Okay. Um, you have a annexation procedure update as well?
Oh, yeah, yeah, so, um, annexation, annexation's been mentioned quite a bit recently, and then again, in the past few meetings, talking about economic development, we need to keep it annexed. So one thing, I looked back and there are times when there hasn't been a particularly consistent way of handling annexation. Sometimes there's hearings held, sometimes there's not. Um, so I, I really wanted to know, and turns out the Supreme Court of South Dakota spelled it out about, about as black and white as you could ever ask them to. So I handed out, there should be copies, everybody should have. What this pretty much goes over is a full, their, their interpretation of nine dash four. Um, they break down how, uh, essentially, how nine dash four dash one is explicit to voluntary. Nine dash four dash four and the rest are explicit to involuntary. So it really divvies it up. But, um, so I kind of used all their data here, everything they talk about on how to handle annexation. And moving forward, so we can have more of a, uh, very three-line understanding of it and how to do it, I just, uh, made dope charts. So that's, that's essentially, oh, and with integration of the Custer, yeah, the Custer, um, county extraterritorial agreement, because there is one singular action they asked for us in the extraterritorial agreement, which is essentially to forward it, once we get a request for annexation, we forward it to the county for comment prior to consideration by the Town Planning and Zoning Commissioner, Town Council. So essentially, all that does is add this one extra step. Um, so this would be voluntary annexation, petitions just submitted by three-quarters landowners, voters. Let the county look at it and comment it. Once you get their comments back, we review the petition, resolution of annexation and notify the county. So we don't actually need permission from anybody else. We just need to give them a chance to comment on it, and that's only for the extraterritorial. Then in the unlikely and particularly undesirable chance that we were to pursue, well, involuntary, this is kind of how the modified procedure ends up being for involuntary. So we do the study. And I would think of all the places we would want comment from them, it would be after we do the study before we spend any money and more money. And then, um, we initiate the resolution of intent, then we note, notice and mail to landowners, then we hold the hearing, then we adopt. So it kind of just, thankfully to this Supreme Court opinion, kind of clears everything up. But what I would like to do is, um, work with Terry on like a an act, a better form of voluntary annexation. Here you go, fill this out. And with a step-by-step of everything, everything the landowners need to do, and it's when the case comes up that, or hopefully it will. That more people want to voluntarily annex. And, um, I've talked to Anthony, um, that's the trust and annexation goes through, there's gonna be, we can annex across the highway. So then basically, anybody who becomes contingent to the new annexation, then it becomes an opportunity for annexation. So the Preston.
Yeah, so, and just to give you an update on that, when to expect what to come in, it'd be a voluntary. Um, we're just modifying the, uh, exhibit that we've created that they were look, that they were reviewing. Um, the exhibit laid out what lands surrounding the Preston, uh, property that's already in the town limits, we would annex additional. And the hangup was they didn't have a lot of that broken up. It was like huge pieces of property, a couple hundred acres, you know, and it wasn't, they really wanted to preserve some of the property along Shore Road along the west side, leave that out of the town. That could be more like what they, what they auctioned. So they have a little bit more property that they could do that with, or split that up with, kind of diversify. Everything about what they're doing right now is to try to diversify what their portfolio will be. So it won't be all just single-family housing. They want to have more of a mix, commercial, multi, potential multifamily uh, and single families. So like, same thing with the property, they want to annex less to the town to leave more of that, uh, ranch for potential other ways to generate revenue, right? Um, so when they do, they'll say this will want annex, we'll have to do some parcel splits. And then some parcels will stay in the county, so, you know, like half of the parcel will stay in the county, the other half will be annexed. So we'll be doing that like twice. And then that will resolve some of the concerns they had. And, uh, geographically, it makes sense too, because of the way that's all, like a ridge and like a C shape, and so it would all make sense to do it that way too. So, yeah, that, um, annexation um, allows our zoning to come into play. And so that way, if they want to do a commercial property there, you know, something that the town needs or a multifamily, uh, you know, the county doesn't have a mechanism to do a PUD as far as I understand, right, Terry? They even have zoning and custom, so, um, so it's real champ, much, that's a big challenge for the landowners that want to do a little bit more, uh, diversity in their development.
So, so they may be forced to annex it if they wanted to be correctly zoned, is that what you're saying?
Like in general, in general, it would be voluntary, because let's say they want to, they've got a business idea.
Right.
But it's not gonna work in the county. It kind of is like, yeah, we don't have a mechanism to do that, sorry. Well, then voluntarily annexing would be a way to do that, and it would be in their best interest, they're gonna make money doing that.
Right, maybe forced was the wrong word, maybe they would have no other option than to annex.
Yeah, that'd be ideal. Education. A lot of times what will happen is somebody will come up with that idea, they'll say, well, I'm in Custer County, they'll go up to the county and waste months figuring out what they could find out in ten minutes, that the county doesn't have any mechanism to help them do that. You know, um, and that hermels is the, the best option, the cheapest and fastest option.
Yeah.
Um, other thing is, that the only thing I could say where it would be falling character, potentially on character involuntary is if water and sewer utilities are being provided. So that would be up to you guys.
Okay, very good, yeah, and, um, if, if Terry has content with I wouldn't mind seeing, uh, a draft of what you're talking about, and then we can leave it over.
Yeah.
Make sure that it jives with everything that we know, and then, uh, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
So would that be kind of like a guide as well as an application?
So, and sort of, so then go to like the economic development side, um. Uh, part of, part of the thing is that there are people who have considered voluntary annexation, but maybe we're given not exactly precise information on how that would actually impact them. And we have information that we can say clearly, all right, this is how it's going, as the town, because this is information we have, we can say so this is what your utilities are now, this is what they would be, this is what your taxes are now, this is what they would be. And in many situations, that results in savings. And we could essentially put together a package for each each contingent landowner and saying, oh, by the way, we're not telling you to do this, but this is information you might want to have. You know, and then as we, and we need a we need somebody to take the leap, but once one or two people take the leap and voluntarily annex, and then people, oh, it actually wasn't a bad deal, you know, it's, it's, it's good, and then it can spider out, and then maybe work its way up Gumbo Lily, maybe work its way across from the new Preston development, maybe down the highway. We can, we can, we can let this go organically, so we never have to talk about the, the mean slide again.
All right.
We can just, you know, we can keep it, come on in, this is, this is doing the party.
Yeah, that'd be ideal. Uh, Dan, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we did everything there. Exactly, with whatever planning you have, that's what you've gotta do. And we went through every stage. The challenge is go to Farrelly's place and start there, work your system. That's gonna give you your personal breaks advantage to figure out where you're at. As far as the zoning that, uh, portion of it, that's why we get agricultural lag, so we can have that aspect of them. That's why we customed that situation. It's inevitable that they're gonna pay a little bit more in taxes, because that's just the way it is. The county gave us the numbers, we followed their numbers, and some of their numbers, they were off from what we were given. So then when they went to the county and asked the county, the county gave them a different set of numbers. And that harmed the whole circumstance within where it went from there. So calculations from the county where we're at, the biggest thing that we have for the selling factor is, of course, yes, we have the utilities. Yes, you'll be able to use it upstairs. Yes, you'll be able to use the armed service. Yes, you'll have every aspect of that. The problem is that they're already getting that, so why do we want to annex it? And as far as the contingency, when we put the Northwater sewer line in, we tried to approach people all the way to Gumbo Lily on that aspect for the commercial side, but once again, getting them on board with that situation and bringing them to the public hearing. When you get negativity right off the bat from the residences, there's no sense. You're only in that stage. You know it's gonna get defeated, so what's in that? You're in a forced annexation.
Well, that's, that's the problem. Sorry, I'm not meaning to let you, go ahead, go ahead.
Annexation was the same circumstance. You kind of follow the same process, but the hearings are in a lot different circumstance, and then you dictate what you're gonna do, how you're gonna do it, what's gonna be situated, and then you move forward with that forced annexation. You never have a bloody circumstance, that one of you are going to be called dictators, you're gonna be called every name in the book. And that's the only way you're gonna get there. And the finance officer is gonna be the first one that takes the hit, because they're all coming after us. But it's a matter where that's the reality of the whole world, is the system, we, we beat it to death, we were back and forth. And when we had the other attorney, it was a big situation where they went to the pardon heavy on every aspect. It was a tough situation.
You wanna make a closing comment?
Yeah, that's, that's, so the one mention is, um, the hearings only apply to involuntary annexation. They do not apply to voluntary annexation. It's not, uh, that, that's why we do this, the, the, you catch more flies with honey than, than vinegar. So we, it doesn't, you know, we get out there and get voluntary annexations, and that gets a positive vibe, positive sentiment. We get a few residents to voluntarily annex, and they're like, oh, well, it's exactly a good deal, and then that word spreads and it grows organically.
Um, I mean, yeah, like in a quick.
Just, yeah, a quick one. If you get to your three-quarters, you send all them notices out, you went door to door, read, went door to door to see what the opinion was to get to the three-quarters of voters and landowners. So you get to that positioning for the voluntary side. You can go out with your applications and set them up, but you need to still find out, are you going to ask three-quarters in that area? That was our whole thing. We did have, and then the county sent out a whole different set of figures and reversed that whole situation. Then you get to people interviewing and talking and annexation is never easy, so.
Well, it's definitely some things to keep in mind as we move forward with this procedure. And, uh, appreciate your comment and your experience on that, Dan, but, uh, yeah, no, I mean, the thing, I think at the, the very least, we can, we can have kind of a new face on it. We can send out the documentation and then see where we're at, at that point, and then decide what we want to do then, so. I think that's, uh, I think that's pretty good. Appreciate you digging into that, Aaron, for us, on getting other topics.
Yeah.
That's, that's really great, man. Uh, so let's move on to finance office, and that would be you, Terry.
So monthly finance, we've right at this next meeting. I don't have anything for mail call, and I really don't have anything for Department of Politics, so that leaves the um, budget, the auto supplement. So according to F E H L nine twenty-one dash nine twenty-one, the board is allowed to do an auto supplement when receiving um, state, federal or county grant and like insurance claims. So like I told you, we got the money for the speed sign that we had to purchase, and then they reimbursed us, so I'd like to, um, auto supplement out of the miscellaneous revenue, which is where I received that money into, into our street budget. Which is where I paid for that sign out of, so, it's kind of, and that'll deposit more money in the street budget again. I'll make that motion.
Okay, now, a motion, so the motion is to accept the, uh, miscellaneous revenue to send.
We're doing auto.
Send it back to the street budget.
Yeah.
Aaron makes the motion, Donna, seconds, do we have any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Auto supplement is.
Get that done, and you'll be reflected on the next reports when you get this meeting.
Okay, great. So is that all you have for finance?
That's all, yeah.
Okay, great. So on our own business, we have the resolution for the Economic Development Committee. Think the reason it's on here is because we needed to officially table it, and so, uh, I mean, I, I don't know if, if we have a date in mind that we'd like to revisit it, or we just see, or just table it in, in definite period, and then see if we need to pick it back up at some point in the future. You guys have any thoughts on that, Aaron?
Okay, I'll have a person, take another look first weekend in September, first meeting in September. Or somewhere around that time, Grant, take another look.
What's that? How many, was that two months?
Four hours, yeah, a couple of months, ninety days, sixty days, ninety days.
Do you foresee any developments on that front that, why do we, why do we really need to have the committee at that point?
Yeah, I don't throw all raises on the table right now, but yeah.
Okay.
I could just say that, um, I talked to Lee Deadwood, Economic Development, and I told him that I, very, you know, said how great they were to HAGD and hermels to connect, and she was, she's very happy to meet with, with them. Give them guy, like pitfalls, and how that she works with lead and Deadwood who's on the board, and how, the whole question about committees, um, so maybe you can pick her brain, and I'll set that up. Um, K L J didn't renew their membership, uh, that I got them to pay for, so I got Benish to do it, I'm gonna hand deliver her check for silver membership there, so keep them going, and maybe then we can, we can meet with her.
Yeah, uh, just one point, there was the, um, about, uh, us joining Connects. Um, so two kind of hard falls on that. One is they don't have twenty-five members. And statue, the, we can join, but it would have to have twenty-five members, and the other, it says at least seventy-five percent have to be local. I don't know if any of them would have been down. I think pretty much all of them are.
Yeah, I, yeah.
So we wouldn't be able to meet the, the sort of statutory requirements.
Well, yeah, I don't. Probably just you and Bean.
Yeah, of course. If we join Connects officially, then we'd be the only people in, well, some of the only people, but they might get more, that might be a thing in the future, but.
Okay.
Yeah, other than that.
All right, Dan.
And I thought in the last meeting, you guys just made a motion that you consider people late, so that's just where you're gonna leave.
There wasn't an actual motion.
Yeah, it wasn't a motion on the list. Directly.
Oh, okay.
We needed to do the, the housekeeping on this one. So, uh, I mean, I'm okay with looking at it again, early September. Aaron says that he's got some, uh, tricks up his sleeve. Him wearing a t-shirt means that, uh, I guess we don't have any tricks to see now, but.
He's been on suits on.
Maybe that time he'll be wearing a long sleeve and then.
Motion to table the resolution zero six dash two zero two five for sixty days.
Okay, recognize. Okay, recognize that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Aaron makes the motion, Donna seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion carries, okay. We'll see what you got, man. Alrighty, very good. Moving right along to new business, future of the Hermosa Library. Uh, I know Mark Hartman talked to us about having this on our agenda. He was not able to make it tonight. So do we have anything to present now on this, or do we need to wait until the next meeting that he can attend?
Um, I don't know if there's enough. Concrete for us to really share or bother. They're still very much um, they're negotiating very heavily on that also with Hagde. Really just to say Hagde, they're, they're, they've got a lot of irons in the fire right now, and a lot of different directives.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, let's just um, let's just move that to the next agenda then. So we don't have to have a motion for that, do we, Terry? There's, there's no action. Just a, a point of discussion. Okay, so that brings us to items from constituents. Um, I think. As you, as Dan and Deb being the only constituents remaining, I, I think they know the. The law or the rules for the section, so. Okay, do any of the constituents in the audience, whoever they may be, do they have any items? Yeah.
Uh, soon as Eric gets out, I wanna thank him for coming in as we are. Um, I'll be very curious to see where this ambulance thing goes, so. I, that was, I. Wish we could have made a meeting last night, I had to work on longer than what we anticipated, but. Uh, we had some ideas too, and wanted to see. Where the other circumstances are going to go and what costs they put together for the ambulance itself. And why it's not being placed up by the fire department and themselves with the A M Ps they already existing. And where the tax dollars are coming and the contribution side of it from. County to there. So there's a lot of questions on that side of it. Is in essence sixty thousand is really pretty cheap. That we have to man, staff, bill, provide our own service. Uh, twenty-four seven too, so. So I'll be curious to see the future meeting for that, see whatever figures they have, so. And it's good to see Eric out there going, and have some presence again. I know a lot of people are. Questioning and wondering and excited about the whole circumstance here, so. Be curious and fun to see where it develops for the future of the board. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other constituents have items? Um, Eric?
I did have one thing, I know it's probably off topic, but uh, when it comes to forcing the uh, the stop sign in town. That'll get thrown out on the line. But it'd be real fast because of the height. So if they were to calm down, I thought. Okay, so that's a, that's a one thing I just thought after off air, it was fucking me the other day.
That's a good point.
Cause then we can't do anything real at all. Like if I stop somebody at that point, it's just like shit, they get a pardon language. It happens. Um, people tend to wanna fight things, obviously, but. At that point, it's, it's generally bothering like all kinds of people, like five and a half, six and a half, two years old.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I appreciate you reminding us on that, and that's something that we'll. Probably have to do through the streets committee, I think. So. All right, very good. So moving right along to trustee input. Um, any of the trustees? Would either of you like to go first?
I'm, I, I don't have nothing to do. It was a good meeting, but can't.
Alrighty, very good, Eric.
Yeah, good meeting. We got through quite a lot. Yeah.
Yeah.
And thanks again to Eric for being here, yeah.
Yeah, I'd just like to say um, thanks again to everybody for being here. And I do have some items for executive session, one being a complaint. And another being a personnel issue. So um. I'll make that motion to go to executive session.
Second. I'll second that.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.